Good evening and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. Today is December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, and the time is seven oh two P M. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Finesiano's absent. Boucher.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Kohler.
Present.
We have six present and one absent. There is a quorum this evening. And the first order of business is to approve two meeting minutes from previous meetings. The first is our November nineteenth, twenty twenty four committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you Alderman Kohler for the first and Alderman Boucher for the second. Are there any corrections, corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? All right. Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it and those meeting minutes are approved. This brings us to our second set of minutes this evening, which is the November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four city council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Mikail for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? All right. Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Those meeting minutes are approved. This now brings us to a very special presentation this evening. For those of you who aren't familiar with Rolling Meadows, we are split down the middle by Route fifty-three, and on the east side of Route fifty-three, our students go to Rolling Meadows High School, and on the west side of Route fifty-three, where I am from, we go to William Fremd High School. And I am very pleased this evening to recognize some champions this evening from the Fremd Vikings, specifically the state championship girls' flag football team. And for that, I would like for our representatives this evening from the championship team to approach. Mackenzie Drake. It's a pleasure to meet you. Was there anything that you wanted to say in behalf of the award-winning team this evening?
A lot of my team members are doing other sports tonight and won't be able to make it, so I will be on their behalf accepting this award.
Thank you so much for accepting this award, and this award is a certificate of recognition for the Fremd High School Girls' Flag Football Team and recognition of their extraordinary accomplishment to make history and become the first Illinois state champions in the sport. The team and coaching staff exemplify true dedication, passion, and teamwork that accomplished this victory and established a unique and lasting legacy. Thank you so much. And thank you again to everyone who would be here this evening. We always appreciate when we have excellence in our area and are looking forward to celebrate the accomplishments of our young students, and we look forward to everything that is to come. Thank you again for coming this evening.
Thank you.
With that, there's no mayor's report this evening, but are there any ward reports? Yes, Alderman Bud Matts.
Thank you, Mayor. So I've received calls from people, especially on Ashland and my ward, concerned about considerable tree trimming done by the I-DOT in preparation for the upcoming bridge work. So it's, it's made it relatively really apparent how close their houses are to fifty-three. So I'm looking forward to a partnership between our, our city and I-DOT in making sure that I-DOT does a really good job on cleaning up and actually following through in planting bushes, et cetera, so that some of that noise that was abated by the trees that have been removed will once again be abated in the future. Thanks.
Are there any other ward reports this evening? All right. Hearing none, at this time, we have one signatory on the sign-in sheet for public comment. In order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the city council. Per rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council, and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. The first being, any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. First, each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted twenty minutes in order to address the city council. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order, and commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officials present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. With that said, we do have one signatory on the sign-in seat. Mr. Ahmed, please approach and state your name for the record.
Salaam alaikum. My name is Yusuf. Given the state of the world we are living in, I am here to hopefully clear a few misconceptions in hopes of us becoming less divided than we are today. The phrase I started my speech with, salaam alaikum, is an Islamic greeting which means peace be upon you. You might be surprised to find that this phrase was also what Jesus peace be upon him said to his disciples as mentioned in Gospel of Luke, chapter twenty-four, verse thirty-six. Some of you might think that Islam is a relatively new religion that was created by Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him fourteen hundred years ago. Actually, Islam, which means acquiring peace by submitting your will to God, was there since the time man set foot on this earth. Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him did not create Islam, but was the last and final messenger. Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him said that there were hundred and twenty-four thousand prophets that were sent on the face of this earth. All of the prophets that were sent, like Prophet Adam, Noah, Abraham, Moses, Jesus, peace be upon them all, were sent only for their people, and their message as a whole was meant to be followed only for that specific time period. Since Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him was the last and final messenger, he was sent as a mercy to all of the worlds. It is mentioned in the Holy Quran in Surah Ambiya, chapter twenty-one, verse one hundred and seven, "We have not sent you except as a mercy to all of the worlds." It is also mentioned in the Holy Quran in Surah Sabah, chapter thirty-four, verse twenty-eight, "We did not send you for all mankind except to bring them glad tidings and to warn, but most people do not know." Since Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him was the last and final messenger, the revelation given to him, the Holy Quran, has been preserved exactly as it was revealed to Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him fourteen hundred years ago. Unlike revelations given to previous prophets, God, God took it upon himself to preserve this revelation exactly as it was revealed, so that it continues to serve as the final testament and guidance to all of humanity till the end of time. It is mentioned in the Holy Quran in Surah Al-Hijr, chapter fifteen, verse nine, "Indeed, it is we who sent down the reminder, the Quran, and indeed, we ourselves surely are its guardians." Some of you might think that God of the Muslims is a different God because Muslims say that their God is Allah. Well, if you look in the Arabic Bible used by over ten million Arab Jews and Christians, you will find that the word God in English is translated to the word Allah in many places in the Bible. For example, it is mentioned in the Old Testament in the Book of Genesis, chapter one, verse one, "In the beginning, Allah created the heaven and the earth." I end with the following verse from the Holy Quran that answers the question, "Who is our creator and God, Allah?" It is mentioned in Surah Al-Khlas, chapter one hundred and twelve, verse one to four, where Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala says, "Say he is Allah, the one and unique, Allah, the absolute, the eternal, who is in need of none and of whom all are in need. He neither begat nor was he begotten, and there is none comparable to him." Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment this evening, and this brings us now to our pending items. And our first pending item is item A, ordinance number twenty-four dash fifty-eight, to adopt salary increases for certain employees of the city of Rolling Meadows, not subject to collective bargaining in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to item B, ordinance number twenty-four dash fifty-nine, to authorize the disposal of surplus city property in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item C, ordinance number six twenty-four dash sixty, to approve deferring the imposition of the municipal push tax for the city of Rolling Meadows until July first, twenty twenty-five, in for second reading. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first.
Second.
And Alderman Mikail for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item D, ordinance number twenty-four dash sixty-one, to adopt a new city seal in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to our consent ordinances for this evening in for first reading, which consists of four items, items E through H. There has been a request to pull items G and H. Staff is requesting a waiver of first reading. So this then would bring us to, I'm sorry, does any other person wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda before we move on? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Item E, please.
All right. At this point, this is no longer a consent agenda, and then we will go through each of the items one by one. So at this point, we will begin with items. I suppose we should just start with E and F, and then we'll come back to G and H if that's right with staff. Okay. So we'll begin with item E, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero zero, to approve a plat of re-subdivision and a special use permit for a major change to the rambling rows plan development to authorize the quick trip redevelopment in for first reading. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Madam Mayor, this ordinance is, it affects the seventh ward, so this is in the seventh ward. I have just seen this plan recently. I know we had a preliminary plan, but then when we reviewed it at the last meeting, I talked to city manager Sabo at the last meeting about that plan. It was going to the zoning commission. It has gone to them, and I haven't had a chance to review this since then. So I would like the opportunity to review it with city staff before we go to the second reading. We have three weeks, I believe. Is that correct? So within the next three weeks, I'd like to review this plan since it's in the seventh ward. A couple things of concern. I see there's LP. I wasn't sure if there's LP distribution there, if it's an LP storage, what the LP is all about. So I just want to go through some of the plans and make sure it's consistent with residents we have there mainly behind there.
Okay, so at this time, then that's a comment.
That's a comment, correct.
All right, thank you. Any other, yes, Alderman Bud Matts.
So looking at the plans, I didn't see anything about an elevated sign, or I know that we have a sign, an ordinance for signs along Route fifty-three and that there's a specific number that are already approved. So I just wanted to make sure that the applicant understood that that would be something that probably would be very difficult to get passed, and I don't know if that's part of their plan and it's just not here yet. So I just wanted to make sure that they were aware that there is a special ordinance for those kinds of signs if they were ever thought to have those. So that was my only comment about this.
Any other follow-up from city staff on that item at this time?
No.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for staff at this time for first reading? Okay. Hearing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this item does move forward for second reading. This brings us to item F, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero zero, to approve an amended special use permit for outdoor storage and variations for four zero zero one Industrial Avenue, the Richards Building Supply, in for first reading. Is there a motion to move this forward for second reading? Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves forward for second reading. This now brings us back to item G, and there is a, again, and the staff request to waive first reading for item G so that it can be approved tonight. Is there an other person willing to make a motion to waive first reading of ordinance G? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Reading into the record, item G, ordinance number twenty-four dash sixty-two, to amend the code of ordinances city of Rolling Meadows, Illinois regarding the enforcement provisions for taxes due to the city, including the imposition of tax liens and a financial responsibility tax bond. Is there any discussion regarding the waiver of first reading at this time? All right. Hearing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves forward for second reading, and again, looking for a motion to approve this ordinance this evening. So thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on the approval of this item? All right. Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is approved. This now brings us to item H, and again, staff is asking for a waiver of first evening this, or excuse me, a waiver of first reading this evening. Is there a motion to move this forward for, I'm sorry, to waive the first reading? Thank you Alderman Mikail for the first and Alderman Bud Matts for the second. Is there any discussion regarding this waiver? Hearing none, the question is, shall the first reading be waived? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is now back on the table for approval. Is there a motion to approve item H? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first and Alderman Mikail for the second. Reading into the record, item H, ordinance number twenty-four dash sixty-three, is to define officer, is to define officer to serve as secretary of the as Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, then the question is, shall the ordinance be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This now brings us to new business. We have a motion to ratify payment of bills on warrant for December tenth, twenty twenty-four, item I. Is there a motion to ratify this warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Reyes for the first, and Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question is, shall the warrant be ratified? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, this warrant is ratified. This brings us to item J, a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the approval of the warrant? Hearing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed, this warrant is approved. This now brings us to our consent resolutions, which consist of eleven items this evening, items K through U. Does any alderperson wish to remove any item from the consent resolution for, consent agenda for resolutions? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Q, please.
Item Q. All right, are there any others? Okay, hearing none, then the question is, shall the ten resolutions, or rather, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider the ten resolutions in one motion without debate? Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first, and Alderman McHale for the second. This consists of item K, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash ninety-eight, to authorize the purchase of de-icing materials from Crystal Vision Incorporated for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter season in a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-six thousand dollars in no sense. Item L, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash ninety-nine, to authorize the purchase of up to nine hundred and sixty tons of snow ice control road salt from Morton Salt Incorporated for the winter twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five season through Illinois Central Management System in a not-to-exceed amount of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty cents. Item M, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash one hundred, to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Illinois for the Illinois fifty-three from Elgonquin Road to Salt Creek and Rand Road to Lake Cook, to Lake Cook Road Improvement Project. Item N, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash one zero one, to award the final year extension on a contract for forestry maintenance services in fiscal year twenty twenty-five to R.W. Hendrickson at a not-to-exceed price of seventy-three, seventy-three thousand dollars in no sense. Item O, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash one zero two, to award a professional engineering contract for Phase Three engineering design and related engineering services for the Park Street Storm Project, Phase Three, in an amount not to exceed of fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars. And item P, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash one zero three, to award the annual contract for traffic signal maintenance and annual emergency vehicle pre-exemption inspections to meet electric for fiscal year twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents. Item R, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash one zero five, an award of contract for the services of a design-build project pertaining to the improvements of water pumping stations two and five to Baxter and Woodman Bowler Design Build LLC in a not-to-exceed amount of two million, five hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars in no sense. Item S, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash one zero six, to approve a professional services agreement with Hampton, Lenzini, and Fenwick Incorporated, twenty twenty-five building official and permit review services. Item T, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash one zero seven, to approve a professional services agreement with Fire Safety Consultants Incorporated, ongoing fire code review and inspection services. And lastly, item U, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash one zero eight, to approve the renewal and extension of a power supply agreement with MC Squared Energy Services LLC for the city's electricity aggregation program. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. This brings us back to resolution number twenty-four dash R dash one oh seven, item Q, to authorize a fuel purchase agreement with Relidine Fuel Company for a term of three years. Is there a motion to consider this resolution? Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. Alderman Kohler, you had pulled this for consideration, so you have the first comment.
Yes, First Madam Mayor, it's resolution R one oh four, not one oh seven. Correct?
Thank you. We'll correct that for the record.
Thank you. So this is a rather complicated, it seems to be a fuel purchase agreement, which we usually approve every year in the past. Purchases every year. This one's going to a three-year term, and it's not just the fuel, but if, and I'll direct, can I direct my question to Public Works?
Please pose your question first, and then we can...
So the question is, is, it seems to be that we're doing a three-year agreement because we want to purchase the storage equipment? Is that correct?
Director Kroszkoff, would you like to take this?
Absolutely. So, yeah, so currently, the city does not actually own the fueling tanks out in front of our Public Works facility. So the goal here with this intention is to actually, instead of continuously kind of renting these tanks and kind of being beholden to one fueling supplier through this process, we're able to lease to own essentially these new tanks that we'll be getting. They'll be brand new. And then once that three-year leasing term is kind of over, the agreement ends with that three years as well. We'll be able to go out for RFP again, and it'll be open to fuel suppliers, but the city will then own the tanks.
Okay, so currently, we rent, you say, the tanks?
We don't own them, so technically, yes, we are renting those tanks. We pay two cents above Opus, and they maintain those.
Okay, and the new deal adds what to the...
So, total for the three-year term, it adds six cents additional on top of what we're currently paying for fuel above the Opus price per gallon.
And Opus is, it's competitive, meaning it changes with the price of...
That is the market price for fuel, yes.
And at the end of the day, what are we paying for those tanks? When you calculate out the three-year terms and the adding to the fuel, one hundred thousand gallons, I think we have in there?
Yeah, so at the end of the day, after the three-year term is up, I think we're paying an additional around five thousand dollars per year to, to own these tanks, so it's roughly fifteen thousand dollars over what we're currently paying over that three-year term. I think the big thing is the fuel management system with this would also be getting an upgrade, and that's included in this cost as well. And that price can vary anywhere to, for a new fuel management system would be twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. So we're able to save that cost by kind of including it into this RFP as well. So we'll be getting the new fueling tanks as well as that fuel management system.
Okay, now, the reason you, the rationale for this is that you said that it would give us the right to purchase gas or fuels later from any supplier, correct?
Yeah, so after the three years is up, we'll be able to go out to RFP and then have anybody put in again. Anybody could put in for this last RFP that we had put out. It would have just been a transition period, because Relidine is our current fuel supplier. They own the tanks, so we would have had to, they would have had to remove those. We would have had to get new tanks in from another fueling supplier and kind of go through that process. At the end of this three years, we will own those tanks. So once that term is up, we'll be able to put out an RFP for fuel supply, and we won't have to worry about swapping tanks or anything of that nature.
Okay, so we're locked in for three years. That's what we're saying here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any other, yes, Alderman Bud Matts?
So it just brings a question, I mean, do we want the liability of owning those fuel tanks versus having Relidine own those fuel tanks if there should be a leak that develops? Yeah, I think overall, the city having flexibility to switch fuel providers, depending on the pricing, is a, is a good thing. We can always include in the RFP after the three-year term is up, a maintenance cost above and beyond, like the price per Opus, kind of what we're doing now, just to ensure that the tanks are still being maintained by a, a third-party company that knows what they're doing with those tanks. And then we'll, of course, have all of the, the property, the proper, you know, fuel spill, equipment, and everything onsite. But those tanks will be brand new, and the shelf life of those is many, many years. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding this? Alderman Kohler, this is the last bite of the apple.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Are all these tanks above ground or is any of them ground?
They are all above ground.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
That's my last bite.
All right, hearing none, then the question is, shall this resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This now brings us to other business and reports. There is a mayoral appointment this evening to the Economic Development Committee, and there's a new appointment for Stephen Gauss. Is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the first, and Alderman Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the appointment? Hearing none, the question is, shall the appointment be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the appointment is approved. Thank you for being present this evening, Mr. Gauss. We look forward to you serving on the Economic Development Committee. This now brings us to mayoral proclamations, which there are none this evening outside of the, the board and certification for the Fremd Girls Flag State Champions, and there is no city's clerk report. For our city staff reports, we have our community items of interest, and to that I will defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The city's annual holiday light recycling program is taking place until February seventh, twenty twenty-five. Holiday lights, extension cords, and power strips can be dropped into the collection boxes outside of City Hall. For details about this program, please visit elginrecycling.com. City Hall and Public Works Administrative Offices will be closed on Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, and Wednesday, December twenty-fifth, in observance of the Christmas Eve and Day holidays, and on Wednesday, January first, in observance of New Year's Day. Refuge collection will be delayed one day starting on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, and also delayed one day the following week, following week, starting on Wednesday, January first. For questions, visit the city's website at cityrm.org, or call Public Works at eight four seven, nine six three, zero five, zero zero. For the month of December, the Rolling Meadows Fire Department Keep the Wreath Red displays are visible at both fire stations. The program is a public awareness initiative that encourages residents to protect their families by preventing fires caused by seasonal decorations. The wreaths hanging at the stations begin the season illuminated with red bulbs. Any fire in Rolling Meadows caused by holiday decorations will be represented by a white bulb. For more information on holiday fire safety, please call the fire department at eight four seven, three nine seven, three three five two. On behalf of the City of Rolling Meadows staff, we want to wish everyone a very festive and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the twenty twenty-four grant funding report, it is in the agenda packet, which is available on the city's website. And if any council members or residents have questions, please contact City Manager Rob Sabo. And similarly, for the November twenty twenty-four financial report, that report is in the agenda packet. And if council has any questions, please direct your questions to Finance Director Molly Talkington. We also have the completion of our city rebranding project and our brand guide. And for an update on that, I will defer to our Assistant City Manager slash Community Development Director Len Cole.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In short, I'm closed in your agenda packet this evening. Concurrent with the adoption of new city, city seal, excuse me, by the city council this evening, is the brand guide prepared by our outside consultant. This really brings together all of the different parts that we've, you know, presented to the community and into the city council over the last year, represents the completion of this project. Unless there are any last changes, we're going to finalize this and start implementing it on January one. As asked, as directed by the council, you know, the, the implementation really starts off pretty small. It just starts off with replacements that were already planned or that needed to take place in order to really minimize the amount of funding that those would require the council continuing to have opportunities to weigh applying resources to that into other projects in, in the capital improvement process in future years. But we're, we're excited to have this project complete. We're excited to start putting it into practice.
Thank you very much. We also have our November twenty twenty-four new business report this evening, and to that I will defer to our Business Development Manager, Martha Corner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to announce one new business for the month of November. Although not on the list, I'm pleased to announce that Cardboard Cat Games is now open at Plum Grove Road Shopping Center, twenty-one seventy Plum Grove Road. Cardboard Cat Games provides a variety of board games, trading card games, and role-playing games, and hosts tournaments and game nights. So another option for things to do in Rolling Meadows. And then also, I'm pleased to announce that last Friday, Pacifica on Golf hosted their groundbreaking ceremony. People flew in from all over the country. We had great attendance. The mayor made some remarks, and City Manager Sabo did as well. It's a roughly one hundred and thirty thousand square foot vacant space, a former Sam's Club. It's been vacant for well over a decade. With the advent of this new project, we'll be bringing in a very nice, diverse array of businesses, including a food retailer, an entertainment center, and a variety of Asian-themed restaurant uses. So we're very excited about that project.
We are very excited about that project, and we look forward to upgrading the groundbreaking ceremony to many ribbon-cutting ceremonies in the future as well, since that is a multi-tenant space that we anticipate welcoming to our community. At this time, we also have our January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five city council draft agenda, and to that I will defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The draft agenda is included in the agenda packet. At this time, there are only a few items listed on there, including the two items which were approved on first reading tonight, not for second reading. Under resolutions, we have a update to the city's employee manual. This is just taking a look at the manual over the course of the past year and making some recommended revisions based on law changes and updating the document based on experiences over the past year. So those are the only two items, or that's the only resolution at this time. That agenda will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act within forty-eight hours before that meeting dates. Thank you.
Thank you. This now brings us to matters not on the agenda. Are there any items that council members would like to bring forth for discussion for matters not on the agenda? Yes, Alderman Boucher.
Because I failed and forgot to ask. I had a couple of questions last week, because our refuse came through early in Ward Five. It is six thirty. They can start picking up, and not seven, correct? We had early pickup, so I had a couple of residents calling because they were running out to bring their garbage, and then there was confusion about what hour it started.
Yes, our refuse staff starts at six AM throughout the week, so it's six thirty.
Perfect, that's all. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
So the clarification is that our refuse teams begin their day at six AM. And then also, during the winter months, residents can bring forth their waste receptacles for pickup as early as three thirty, three?
The prior day.
The prior day, yes. Yes, so that way you don't have to then rush out in, in the morning to bring it out. I know that this was a, a big contentious issue in the city of Rolling Meadows before we had the bins where we could put our refuse out in, in the cold or in the summer, and that is no longer an issue. We should be able to be able to pull it out then the evening before. I do have one item I'd like to bring forth is to just wish everyone happy holidays and end of New Year. We'll see everyone in, in January to continue with city business. However, city staff are still here and ready to serve. As always, we have our emergency operations that will continue throughout the holidays. Hopefully, you, you won't need those services, but they are there. As mentioned earlier in the city manager's report about keeping the wreath red, I just want to remind everyone that in twenty twenty, unfortunately, as a result of a malfunctioning decoration, there were eighteen families that were displaced in a condo fire. And so, please, as we are celebrating, we want to make sure that we're celebrating with common sense and with safety and with all of the precautions that we can to make sure that we're keeping ourselves safe, our families safe, and our neighbors safe. Thank you again, and we look forward to continuing business in twenty twenty-five. With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-nine PM.